We're back from recess. We're now on Bill 182-36 LS. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place substitute Bill 182-36 LS as amended by the Committee on Revenue, Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning and further substituted on the floor. It's an act to amend Section 5214 of Article III, Chapter 5, Title V Guam Code annotated relative to improving sole source procurement and requiring the promulgation of rules and regulations for the same, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores-Perez, cosponsored by Senators Joanne Brown, James C. Moylan, Joe West, and Augustine, and Telo T. Taitegui.
On the motion to accept the bill as substituted on the floor, as amended by the committee and substituted on the floor, is there any objection? There are no objections. Motion carries. Please proceed, Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place substitute Bill Number 182-36 LS in the third reading file and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
All right. Thank you. So Bill 182-36 aims to increase accountability and transparency in the government of Guam's sole source procurement. In current statute, sole source contracts can be awarded if the procurement officer determines in writing that only one provider exists for suppliers of services or construction items. No requirement exists for determination of need, price restrictions, performance bonds, or limitations to the length of contract, thus potentially enabling a sole source contract to persist despite changes in market availability and emergence of new vendors and providers. Bill 182-36, as amended and substituted on the floor, aims to reform sole source procurement by the following: requiring written determination and documentation based on market research that only one provider exists and that can meet the minimum needs of government; by limiting sole source contracts to one year with four successive annual options of one year each to renew if only one sole provider exists; by requiring that contract price is fair and reasonable by the chief procurement officer, the director of public works, the head of a purchasing agency, or designee above the level of procurement officer; by requiring a package is created that defines the parameters for the sole source contract prior to negotiations. The parameters shall include the following: a purchase description, evaluation factors, delivery or performance schedule, contract terms and conditions, warranty, bonding, or other requirements that would provide safeguards from use of unsolicited offers; by requiring public notice within 14 calendar days of making sole source contract that is in excess of $50,000; it shall include the name of the contractor, the amount, and the nature of the contract. Bill 182-36 is in line with the public auditor's recommendations that research and justifications are needed for sole source contracts upon the finding of noncompliance of GSA according to an OPA report 17-05. Additionally, the potential growing demand for information technology, which comprises about 42% of GSA's sole source procurement, it is important to safeguard, provide safeguards in order to increase public confidence. Furthermore, it is essential to minimize the use of noncompetitive practices that can drive up cost of government. If used incorrectly, sole source creates a greater dependency on the single business contracted by the government and increases the vulnerability and risk of interruption of supplies and services. The specifications justifying a sole source contract must be scrutinized, and where there is reasonable doubt that minimum needs of government were not specified, the sole source contract should be terminated and a competitive method of source selection be used. I would like to thank my cosponsors for their support and ask my colleagues in advance for theirs. Together, we can work to increase the public trust and promote better stewardship of our government funds and the service to our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 182-36 LS as substituted, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? On Bill 182-36, if there's no one else, Senator St. Augustine?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just rise in support. I'm a cosponsor, and it's true. It'll try to bring some more transparency and more trust from the community, from the business community, to the government of exactly what we need to do and how to get the funds out and get the work done. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The author would yield to a question?
Please state your question.
Thank you. On Section 4, the effective date, the act shall be effective 90 calendar days after enactment, and why the 90 calendar days instead of immediately?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Section 4 has the effective date. This act shall be effective 90 calendar days after enactment. Why 90 days and not effective immediately?
You know, thank you for that question. I think it's important to develop these rules and regs. So at the hearing, Director Byrne was there, and he was very supportive of the bill, and he would like to, he was very supportive of creating rules and regs, and I think it's important to give him the time, for the policy office, that is, to develop these rules and regs. And actually, after looking at that, I need to perhaps make that aligned with Section 3. So in Section 3, we have 180 calendar days, so perhaps increasing the effective date to that time period. So there needs to be a change. I need to make an amendment to the inactive, effective date of enactment.
Senator Ada, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So does the author intend to make an amendment to that?
Yes, I do. Maybe perhaps if I can make the recommendation verbally, or does it have to be in writing?
You do not have the floor right now, unfortunately. You can do that on your closing. Otherwise, Senator Ada, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Those are the only questions I have.
On the bill, Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I stand in support of this legislation and thank the author for her due diligence in continuing to address the issues of procurement. It's a very tasking, tasking job. I mean, even they have courses at GCC in which the good author of this legislation has taken upon herself, on her own, to attend these courses, to learn more about procurement and the responsibilities of what this government is required to do. And I thank her for allowing me to be a cosponsor of this legislation and look forward to additional legislation coming up to address some of the other loopholes in procurement process. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, 182-36 LS, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of Bill 182 with regards to sole source procurement. You know, the government is a major customer, obviously, in our community for a number of businesses. Unfortunately, sometimes due to past history, there are many companies that will not deal with the government of Guam, you know, just because of time and effort and hassle that's involved in dealing with government procurement. Yet at the same time, there's also others that, you know, it's unfortunate, but it does happen in our government, you know, where there are those that have inside information with regards to what's being procured in many cases because there's actually a need for a certain service or product that the government can provide, you know, needs to have provided. Or unfortunately, sometimes a need gets created so that certain people can get contracts. We've often talked about the benefits of, you know, doing bids and procurement and letting the market essentially determine what's the best business and the best price and the best source that we can get, resources that we need for the government. Sometimes it works well, sometimes it doesn't. You know, when I was at DPW and we needed to, you know, a little stop sign on the buses, you know, when the bus stops, it pulls out its little manual stop sign so that everyone on the road hopefully is going to stop and make sure it's safe for the children to get on and off the bus. And I remember one time we got a price quote that it was $600 for that little piece of metal. And you're like, wow, how is that determining? That's the best price to get that stop sign for the bus. But obviously, they'll come back and say, well, you know, some companies won't work with the government, so we don't have a lot of options, or this is the only company that can provide this particular commodity that we need. I think we want to make sure that when sole source is used, and granted, there are things we're going to need that not every company, there's not going to be several companies on Guam, for example, that are in the business of providing that particular commodity that we need. It might be something very specialized that only a certain company may, may have an interest in wanting to provide. But we also have a greater concern in our government that we actually see friends and families somehow that benefit in the course of certain needs of the government, particularly as we look most recently with this pandemic. And that question is there, whether it's true or not, I guess, you know, time will tell. But there's that concern that's there in the back of your mind, because when you look at the list, you're like, wow, I should get into this business. I'd do very well in this. And I think that's the very thing we want to avoid in government. We want to make sure that when we're procuring these things, that there's, there's a fair play out there, that no one's getting an advantage that others aren't, or others, you know, that end up, who are friends and family, creating companies all of a sudden because they can profit from it, because they know, because of inside information, that that's something the government's going to be procuring and they're going to be the one to provide it. I think that's the kind of thing we want to avoid, particularly when you're dealing with sole source procurement. And yes, there's a whole process, there's a whole almost created science of procurement in the government of Guam that for me sometimes is very cumbersome. If you actually have to go through a legitimate process of procurement in government, to me, it's a very laborious project, process that actually prevents us sometimes from getting what we need in a timely manner, or getting it at what is a fair and reasonable price, because by the time the government procures it, it's much more expensive. You know, like cardboard boxes, you know, they imagine the legal-sized cardboard boxes. GSA was providing them for $25 a box. $25 for a cardboard box because on the side of it, it said, "Property of the Government of Guam," something that a moving company could provide for $2 or $3 a box. So there's a lot of issues with regards to sometimes how this government procures that, you know, raises some big question marks in my mind. But at the same time, we want to make sure the playing field is fair, we want to make sure that those that are being given the opportunity to bid have an equal chance, and in the cases where there is no bidding because it's determined that, you know, a certain commodity or service is limited, or maybe only one company in all of Guam can provide it, or one company in all of Guam might be able to bring it into the island, that we're not having special favors being distributed in our government, or companies all of a sudden that crop up because they know that the government's going to be procuring certain commodities and take advantage of the situation. And that's what we're concerned, especially in the case of sole source. There have been some things in this government over the years that are procured by sole source every year for years, and then you track back who is getting that contract. And there's no competitive bid, there's no further determinations, or anybody else that can provide that particular commodity. And sometimes we're talking a few dollars, sometimes we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes we're talking millions of dollars. And I think our people are deserving of making sure that they are getting the best for their dollars that are being invested. I won't, I guess I should use, as we say, the best bang for the buck, as they say, right? So I certainly support this legislation. I think anything we can do to increase the transparency of how and what our government procures and at what price is important, because I'll tell you, you don't need to get your special favor getting hired in the government of Guam, heck, get, get a private contract. You can live quite comfortably off that. And there's no reason we can't have things done the right way. I think that's an expectation that our public has. So certainly anything that strengthens that process, I'm very supportive of. So I thank Senator Sabina for introducing it, and our other colleagues who have cosponsored this legislation. I certainly hope our colleagues also support it with that. Madam Speaker, I have no further comments with regards to this bill.
Sisus Massey, Senator Brown. On the bill, Bill Number 182-36 LS as substituted on the floor. Speaker Turlohi, you are recognized.
Thank you. I rise in support of this bill, although I have great concerns regarding sole source procurement. So this bill is intended and does put in additional safeguards against sole source procurement, or it puts in additional requirements on the governor, on the government's side so that they, they document the need, that is, the specific need that a, an agency might have, and they document that there is no other source. Now, that's where my concern, you know, I, I've, when I've questioned sole source procurement, it's because I don't, it doesn't look clear to me that they've made it very public, their need, or that they've made very public their solicitation of all sources. And I really think there should be a great burden on GSA and all agencies to, before they say this is the only source, to, to really ensure that, to solicit that, to publicly announce and, and invite anyone to say, I can do that. Because competition is really, is really key in our procurement. It's the only way we're going to get value is to invite competition. And so this is a huge exception to our regular procurement law. We are saying we will allow procurement without competition to, to a vendor who, someone has determined to be the only vendor who can provide this service or this equipment or supply to the government of Guam. And that's a huge finding, I think, that should be taken with great, great concern. So, so I am in support of the bill that, that adds some of these things. It requires the chief procurement officer, DPW, or the purchasing agency to prepare a package to market and to present to prospective vendors or service providers based on the need of the agency. And this is, I think, where, you know, most of our criticism of procurement comes in. Do they really need a golf cart with, you know, an umbrella, or do they need a golf cart, you know, with a certain speed, or whatever? Because this is where, you know, sometimes we suspect that they are writing, you know, their need to, to match certain vendors, and then of course, make it easier to say there is no other vendor with a golf cart with, with an umbrella attached to it as opposed to just a golf cart. So, you know, I, I'm glad that they were, they're going to be, have to make a determination of need, they're going to have to show market research, contain a description, evaluation factors, delivery or performance schedule, inspection and acceptance requirements, the contract terms, and all of this supposedly in advance of a sole source procurement. And I hope that that is going to help to safeguard the government, as particularly the marketing. Because if they market and they find out to meet this need, there actually is more than one vendor, then hopefully, they won't have to go sole source after that. I very much appreciate the, the term limits that have been put into this bill for sole source contracts, including, you know, they're allowed to do only one year with four successive options to renew, annual options. But before they avail themselves of these options to renew, which would make it four years as opposed to one year, they again have to determine in writing that there is only one source for the required supply. So after one year on a sole source procurement, they're going to have to determine again, every time they renew that, that that is the only source. I am hoping when the rules and regulations, which this bill also requires, that when those rules and regulations come out, that they are going to, you know, require a public solicitation during this period so that they can be very confident that there is no other source that has been established during the year of this contract, right? So before you renew a sole source procurement, a year has passed, maybe there's another company that's come into place, I would like the government to publicly, very publicly invite again any vendors that may have been established in that year. I think that's how we're going to safeguard. The more solicitation possible, the more invitation, and the more public we make that invitation or that solicitation, the better we are going to assure ourselves that there is no other source, and the better that we make our specifications, or the more, you know, precise we make those without tailoring it to a certain company, and I like the safeguards that have been put in, put in here, that they're going to have to publish any, any contracts over $50,000, you know, once they make an award. And they're going to have to publish that, and, and that way, the public will also know and be able to object, hopefully, if, if there is another source that is available and that they have been bypassed. We are requiring that our purchasing agents are going to certify in writing, and this was not in the previous law, they're going to certify in writing that the contract price is fair and reasonable and consistent with applicable regulations. It shall include relevant costs and price information from the sole source and comparable or substitute supplies, services, or construction items. To be honest, that part there is a little confusing to me because if we're only getting, you know, pricing information from the sole source vendor, I don't know how we're going to determine whether that's fair or reasonable, but, but hopefully, when the rules and regulations that this bill requires come out, that they are going to make very clear how they are going to do that. So I think the rules and regulations are key. I'm glad that they're going to be done pursuant to the AAA. I'm glad they're going to be done no later than 180 calendar days after the enactment of this act, because I think those rules and regulations are really going to be critical to whether this law, or whether our sole source procurements are now going to give us better value, or whether we're just going to continue the way we are today. So I support this bill, 182, and I thank the sponsor for the work that she's done to try to, to close those gaps on sole source procurement. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Speaker Turlohi. On the main, on the main item, Bill Number 182-36 LS as substituted on the floor. Senator Perez, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to proffer an amendment to change the effective date from 90 calendar days to 180 calendar days to be in line with the amount of time that this bill allot for the promulgation of rules and regulations to accompany this, this piece of legislation. And I believe it's in the drive.
It's uploaded.
Okay. So, yes, I'd like to proffer this amendment to change that.
On the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the amendment? Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In further reviewing Section 3 and Section 4, if the author of the, the proffer of the amendment makes that 180 calendar days after enactment to coincide with the 180 calendar days on Section 3, that would give this bill almost a year before it comes back for rules and regulations. So perhaps, and what we can do, because I probably would like to proffer an amendment to the amendment and make it, the effective date shall be effective immediately, and then the procurement offices, the procurement office would have 180 days to come up with the rules and regulations instead of almost one year.
Are you making an amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So your proposal is to...
Change the, this act shall be effective immediately.
All right. Pardon? On the...
Yes, Senator.
Can I ask for a brief...
So the amendment to the amendment would be to make the effective date immediately.
Can I request a brief recess to check with legal?
Yes. I think we're going to take a one-minute recess, and if we could, put that in writing.
Can I ask for a brief recess?
So the amendment to the amendment would be to make the effective date immediately.
Can I request a brief recess to check what legal?
Yes. I think we're going to take a one-minute recess, and if we could, put that in writing. We're back from recess. When we left off, Senator Perez had offered an amendment, and Senator Ada had offered an amendment to the amendment. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that short recess. And after confering with my colleague, at this time, I'd like to withdraw my amendment to the amendment.
Sisus Massey, on the amendment, so now we're back on the main amendment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the amendment? Oh, sorry. On the motion to withdraw, let me take a vote. Is there any objection on that motion to withdraw Senator Ada's amendment to the amendment? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Now back on the main amendment by Senator Perez. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on the amendment? If not, then Senator Perez, you may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I actually would like to withdraw that amendment. And so the, to retain the original language that this act shall be effective 90 calendar days after enactment.
All right. On the motion to withdraw the amendment, is there any objection to withdraw the amendment? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are on the bill. Yes, so Senator Perez, you're back on the bill. Do you have an amendment?
Yes, I have a different amendment. It's lines 6 to 7, page 4, in Section 3. So currently, it states that the amount of time given for the rules and regs to be promulgated would be 180 days. I would like to reduce that down to 90 calendar days after enactment of this act. And the reason being is that there might be, you know, with this legislation, you know, because of the 90 calendar day, 90 calendar days after enactment, you know, hopefully that the policy office will begin to start creating these rules and regs. And so upon the enactment of 90 days, potentially, there could be an alignment with enactment and the rules and regs be ready, ready to go. So even though they're not mandated to do it, they can, you know, voluntarily start to create these rules and regs so that there's no gap in time between the enactment and the full implementation with rules and regs already in place. Of course, alternately, should they not have the rules and regs in place? They have this 90 calendar days to finalize it. So that's, that basically gives them a little bit more flexibility in being able to implement this legislation.
On the amendment to change 180 days to 90 days on line 6 through 7 on page 4, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the amendment? There's no one to speak on the amendment. Senator Perez, you may close on the amendment. All right. So is there any objection to the amendment? Hearing and seeing no objection, the motion carries. Amendment passes. Senator Perez, you still have the floor.
Yeah, I thank my colleagues for their support on this piece, on this bill. And currently in statute, sole source procurement is not even solicited. It's a contract without, with very few safeguards. It doesn't even mention pricing. It doesn't mention any other, any other restrictions other than a contract can be awarded. And so I think what Bill 182-36 does, it provides a much-needed safeguards. As we look towards sole source procurement, you know, as a government, it perhaps can increase its non-competitive...